Good evening. This is the eighty-sixth meeting of the seventy-first term of the Baltimore City Council. It is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight invocation will be led by Father Jean Pierre Capoumit, okay, I hope I pronounced it right, of Saint Gregory of the Great Catholic Church. After invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We pray in the name of our Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Almighty and ever-living God, Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, we give you thanks and prayers for the gift of life. We thank you, Father, for bringing us together this evening. We give you thanks because in your love and mercy, you have chosen these women and men among their brothers and sisters to exercise justice and protection of the common good. Bless and guide the members of this city council and this house where your people meet through their representatives. Let your Holy Spirit enlighten their minds and hearts. Let him guide all their actions so that peace and love may reign in our city. Bless all their plans and deliberations and bring them to success. Heavenly Father, open their ears to the needs of the citizen of this great city. Fill them with courage to overcome self-interest in favor of the good for all. Bless our city, Lord God, with your heavenly gift and your mercy. Make us ready to do your will. And we ask this in the name of Jesus the Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Kraft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Costello, Stokes, Clark. Mr. President, with the quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation is Tracy A. Barnett of the National Kidney Foundation. She will talk about the great work they are doing to prevent kidney and urinary tract disease and improving the health and well-being of families affected by these diseases. Welcome.
Thank you, President Young. Good evening, and thank you to the city council for allowing us tonight to address the problem of kidney disease in your community and what the National Kidney Foundation of Maryland is doing to help with those efforts. I'm Tracy Barnett, the Chief Executive Officer and President of the National Kidney Foundation of Maryland. Tonight we will talk a little bit about kidney disease. This is National Kidney Month, the month of March, so we are out and about trying to educate the community about kidney disease, which is actually oftentimes a silent killer, believe it or not. And you may ask, why is kidney disease a silent killer? Well, unfortunately, the kidneys can actually lose up to ninety percent of their functions before you may realize that you actually have kidney disease. And by this time, you will really, there is really no recourse. There's no turning back once the kidneys have reached that stage. And the only recourse is actually to start on dialysis, which is usually a three to four times a year event, three to four hours at a time. The other recourse is, of course, a kidney transplant. Kidney disease is the ninth largest cause of death in the United States. More people die from kidney disease each year than those from breast cancer, prostate cancer, or leukemia. There are several important signs that would allow you to know that you are at risk for kidney disease, and they are very prevalent diseases that are throughout the United States and particularly here in our Baltimore area. The first is hypertension, which is actually high blood pressure, and the second is diabetes. Because of the prevalence of high blood pressure and diabetes in the Baltimore region, Baltimore has a much higher-than-average instance of kidney disease. In fact, one out of eight people in the Baltimore region will develop chronic kidney disease during their lifetime, and this is higher than the national average, which is about one out of nine individuals. In fact, in any given day, today, for instance, there are about ninety-three hundred Marylanders who are on dialysis here in our region, and sixty percent of them are African Americans. There are approximately twenty-two hundred Marylanders who are waiting for a kidney transplant right now. The National Kidney Foundation of Maryland is a nonprofit voluntary health organization, and we are in business to help educate individuals about kidney disease, how to prevent it, and how to treat it if you do develop it. We actually started in nineteen fifty-five as the Maryland Nephrosis Foundation, and in nineteen sixty-four became one of the first affiliates for the National Kidney Foundation, which is headquartered in New York City. We combat kidney disease through three major efforts: awareness, prevention, and treatment. In the area of awareness, NKF provides the community and professional medical professionals with education and free screenings. Our screenings are conducted throughout Maryland. We particularly offer a lot of free screenings here in Baltimore. And we encourage anybody who has high blood pressure or diabetes to take advantage of our free screenings if you're not sure whether you have the starting symptoms of kidney disease or not. The free screenings are very easy. You'll be asked a few questions by a physician, and then you will receive a blood test, pretty harmless, and from the blood test, we can tell if you have the signs of early kidney disease. Or in some cases, we do screenings on individuals who have no idea they have kidney disease, and we learn that they actually have advanced-stage kidney disease, at which time we can refer them to the proper medical people in our community. In addition to the screenings, we also provide two hundred thousand dollars each year in research grants. We are very fortunate here in Baltimore to have two prestigious institutions that are doing studies in kidney treatment and kidney research, and those are Johns Hopkins and the University of Maryland Medical Center. And each year, we provide to them grants so that they can conduct the research. The research is usually done by graduate students who are looking for breakthroughs in treatment and helping to eliminate kidney disease throughout the world. We also provide financial assistance to individuals who are on dialysis here in our region. Unfortunately, as I mentioned earlier, dialysis usually means three to four dialysis treatments each week, and they can last two to four hours at a time, so it can make it very difficult for individuals who are on dialysis to actually hold down a job. So at that point in time, many of them do have a lot of financial issues. And through our patient grants that we offer through the National Kidney Foundation, we are able to help them with such things as rent, utilities, food, medical bills, and even transportation to and from their dialysis treatments. We're pleased to say that eighty cents of every dollar that we raise stays here in our region to help with the programs that I just talked about: research, patient assistance, and public education. I would like to invite all of you to join us on Sunday, April nineteenth, at Camden Yards for the Baltimore Kidney Walk. This is our annual kidney walk. Each year, we have over five thousand individuals come out to participate. We plan to raise over four hundred thousand dollars this year, again, to help with research and programs in our community. And most of our walkers actually have been touched by kidney disease. We have many dialysis patients who walk. We also have their family members. We have kidney transplant recipients who participate in the walk, so it's really a great opportunity for them to actually come out and not only support the organization, but to let people know that just because you have kidney disease doesn't mean you can't be an active member of the community. So I'd like to thank the city council for this invitation to speak and certainly let you know that we are just a call away if you would like us to help with any of the community needs surrounding kidney disease or help your constituents in any way, because that's why we are here and that's why we raise money to help with our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy, for all that important. Tracy, thank you for that important information. It's really important that people be aware of whether they have kidney disease or urinary tract infection that can lead to other illnesses. So we want to thank you for the great work that you and the National Kidney Foundation is doing. It is the council custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Scott, seconded by Council Vice President Riceinger. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings in the March ninth city council meeting is on the council member's desk.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion by Councilman Welsh, seconded by Councilwoman Holton. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two to four of the agenda. Bills vetoed by the mayor can be found on page four of the agenda.
City Council Bill fourteen dash zero three nine seven, Residential Permit Parking Program, Hampton North Area, ordinance for the purpose of establishing a new statutory residential permit parking area for the Hampton North Area and adopting a parking management plan for the area. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter.
Chair recognizes Councilman Curran. I mean, Councilman Kraft.
Yes. Mr. President, I'd like to explain my vote on this. Is this a vote on override?
This bill fails. The bill fails. Read the next.
President Young, Kraft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill fails.
I don't know what we're voting.
All right. Call the names. This is the bill that the charter requires us to have a vote on. So if you want to vote, vote.
Council President Young?
No.
Council President Young, no. Councilman Kraft? Councilman Kraft, yes. Councilman Scott? Councilman Scott, yes. Councilman Curran?
The yes vote is for the override.
It's supporting the override of the veto.
And a no vote is against. No. Supporting the veto is a no. No.
Chair recognizes Councilman. Right. I'm your Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I want to explain my vote on this. I voted against this bill, and I think it's a bad bill. And I explained why I thought at that time that I voted against the bill because of all the experiences that I've had with permit parking in my district. But I'm voting for overriding the veto, and I'm voting for overriding the veto as a matter of principle here because this is not the first time that we've had this particular situation, and the situation is this. And this is agency reports that have come from the administration in support of a bill. And both on this bill and in a bill dealing with plastic bags, we had agency reports come in from all of the city agencies supporting the legislation. And those bills come in and say the administration supports the legislation, and then after the legislation is passed by this council, then the administration vetoes the bill. Now, it makes no sense for the administration to have their representatives from their agencies come in here and testify before this council that they support a piece of legislation and explain to us the reasons why they support that piece of legislation and tell us that that's a good piece of legislation, and then have the administration veto the bill. It makes no sense. It's not a different bill. So I'm talking about this bill. Councilwoman, if you want to speak, speak.
Councilman Kraft, have the floor. I recognize you when your time comes, Councilwoman.
The, so the agencies supported this bill, this residential permit parking bill, and the bill was passed, they supported it. And as I said, I voted against the bill. But I don't understand why a bill that all of the administration's agencies supported and that was passed with administration agencies' support was subsequently vetoed by the administration. So my vote's yes to override the veto.
Councilman Kraft, yes. Councilman Scott? Councilman Scott, yes. Councilman Curran? Councilman Curran, no. Councilman Henry? Councilman Henry, no. Councilwoman Specter?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Specter.
I hesitate to stand up and explain my vote, but I will. Does no mean I don't support the override, Mr. President?
Yes. A no vote is you don't support it.
That's what I thought it would mean, and that's why I was a bit confused by my colleague because the question about getting support from all the agencies on a bill and then the mayor vetoing it isn't exactly how it did come to pass. When it did get to the mayor to sign, it wasn't the same bill that was written and heard and passed by the council. It was amended on third reader for final passage. So it didn't come to her as a three-cent fee per bag, but in fact, a ban, and that's why I think that it required whatever the mayor did. But I understand that didn't require an override. That process, that's why I'm trying to, I thought that was part of your explanation. In that case, it didn't, and I think the public should understand that.
Yeah, but what happened was you have to meet the twenty-day requirement, and the other two did not meet that requirement.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the listening audience should understand that when there was a veto, this process didn't kick in by charter, and this time it did, and I vote no.
Councilwoman Specter, no. Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Middleton, no. Councilwoman Mosby? Councilwoman Mosby, no. Councilwoman Holton? Councilwoman Holton, no. Councilman Welsh? Councilman Welsh, no. Councilman Riceinger?
Chair recognizes Council Vice President.
Yeah, I just want to respond, Mr. President, to my colleague from the First District. It's my understanding the Planning Commission did not support the Councilwoman's bill when it was first introduced, so I just want to give that clarity. And my vote is no.
Councilman Riceinger, no. Councilman Costello?
No.
Councilman Costello, no. Councilman Stokes? Councilman Stokes, no. Councilman Branch, absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
I entered this chamber knowing that I didn't have the votes. I didn't really know how right I was, but I understand. I would like to clarify that this bill was amended on second reader to extend from one hour to two hours, the time that was not covered by the permit parking. There was no amendment on third reader. That was the only amendment that did not come from committee, and the committee amendments, the committee amendments were well-known, and actually, the bill was heard as though those amendments had been adopted. So, Mr. President, I already knew I had lost this vote, but I hope we have not lost the administration's effort now to step in and take care of this corner of the neighborhood around the rotunda. I'm going there tomorrow, thanks to my colleague, Councilwoman Middleton, who sits there and had thought it was an okay idea. I'm going to the Board of the Parking Authority tomorrow to say that this legislation is vetoed and the veto not overridden. And beginning in late summer and September, the rotunda will begin renting its three-hundred-eighty-five apartments, only sixteen of which require that you pay parking as part of the rent, and that they will then be rolling out not just the residential, but also the retail I'm not going to introduce another RPP bill in this area because I don't have, the neighbors don't have another year and a half to work on something and present it and have it vetoed by the second floor. So it's on the mayor now, and it's on the Parking Authority to do justice to the need when even their most, when even the most consultants or advisors or whatever, who are the most dubious, will not be able to park there in order to go in and count how many are parking in the parking garage. So I thank my colleagues for this whole long process, so much of it in vain because of a veto at the very, very eleventh hour and without a conversation with, except with one single phone call to one single constituent living within that RPP area. Thank you.
Thank you. This bill fails. Bills should be introduced.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero four nine seven, Urban No, Jonestown Amendment, ordinance for the purpose of amending the urban no plan for Jonestown to add a new disposition lot to the no plan, to revise Exhibit One to reflect a land use change in the portion of a new disposition lot, and to revise Exhibit Three to reflect the addition of the new disposition lot, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Urban Affairs and Agent Committee.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero four nine eight, Public Ethics Law, prohibited gifts, duplicate exemptions, ordinance for the purpose of consolidating certain overlapping and redundant exemptions for gifts related to payment of expenses for the speaking engagement or for the participation on the panel, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to ethics in the public sector. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero four nine nine, Public Ethics Law, prohibited gifts, closing gaps, ordinance for the purpose of clarifying expressly that certain prohibitions encompass gifts from persons that a public servant knows or has to know, seek to engage in activity that is regulated by the public servant's agency, or from persons that have recently been lobbyists with respect to matters within the jurisdiction of the public servant, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the ethics of the public sector. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five zero zero, Public Ethics Law, prohibited interest clarifications, ordinance for the purpose of clarifying expressly that certain prohibitions encompass employment by or financial interest in persons having or negotiating in certain blanket or other contracts with the city or with an agency of the city, requiring certain disclosures, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to ethics in the public sector. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five zero one, Public Ethics Law, financial disclosure, repeal of pointless exemption, ordinance for the purpose of repealing and apposite an effectively meaningless exemption from local disclosure requirements for persons who submit copies of state disclosure statements, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to ethics in the public sector. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five zero two, Sale of Property, NS Worcester Street, four seventeen through ten Northwest Ridgely Street, ordinance for the purpose of authorizing the Maryland City Council of Baltimore to sell it, either public or private sale, also interested in a certain property known as NS Worcester Street, four seventeen, ten Northwest Ridgely Street, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five zero three, Zoning, Conditional Use, Second-Hand Store, twenty-four twelve East Monument Street, ordinance for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a second-hand store on the property known as twenty-four twelve East Monument Street, as outlined in red and the accompanying plaque. Sponsored Branch.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five zero four, Collection of Taxes, Fees, Etc., Warning of Lean and Potential Foreclosure, ordinance for the purpose of requiring certain city bills, invoices, and other statements to contain a warning of the potential consequence of a failure to pay. Sponsored Stokes, Kraft, Costello, Curran, President Young, Middleton, Scott, Holton, Henry, Riceinger, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Welsh is a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five zero five, Rezoning, Fifty-six oh one Eastern Avenue, ordinance for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as Fifty-six oh one Eastern Avenue, as outlined in red and the accompanying plaque, from the M-three zoning district to the B-two-three zoning district. Sponsored Kraft.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five zero six, Plant Unit Development, Designation Fifty-six oh one Eastern Avenue, ordinance for the purpose of approving the application of TRP MCB Fifty-six oh one Eastern LLC, owner of certain property located at Fifty-six oh one Eastern Avenue, so the property designated a business plant unit development, and approving the development plan submitted by the applicant. Sponsored Kraft.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five zero seven, Zoning, Conditional Use, Conversion of a Single-Family Dwelling Unit to a Two-Family Dwelling Unit in the R-eight zoning district, variance is nineteen twelve West Baltimore Street, ordinance for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a Single-Family Dwelling Unit to a Two-Family Dwelling Unit in the R-eight zoning district on the property known as nineteen twelve West Baltimore Street, as outlined in red and the accompanying plaque, and granting variances from certain lot area sizes and certain off-street parking requirements. Sponsored Welsh.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill fifteen dash zero five zero eight, Zoning, Conditional Use, Conversion of a Single-Family Dwelling Unit to a Two-Family Dwelling Unit in the R-eight zoning district, variance eighteen oh six West Baltimore Street, ordinance for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a Single-Family Dwelling Unit to a Two-Family Dwelling Unit in the R-eight zoning district on the property known as eighteen oh six West Baltimore Street, as outlined in red and the accompanying plaque, and granting a variance from certain off-street parking requirements. Sponsored Welsh.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution fifteen dash zero two one three, R, informational hearing, sugar-free kids, resolution for the purpose of inviting members of the Sugar-Free Kids Coalition to appear before the council to discuss the effects that sugar has on our children, as well as ways that these can be, as well as ways these effects can be reduced and mitigated to ensure a healthy future for all Baltimore's children. Sponsored Mosby, Middleton, Costello, Curran, Scott, Holton, Kraft, Stokes, Henry, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Welsh is a co-sponsor, Council Vice President Riceinger is a co-sponsor. is a co-sponsor, Chair Recognize Councilman Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I stand today as we understand and know, health is the cornerstone of everything that we do, whether it's education, development, and uplifting our city. But roughly one in three of Maryland's children are overweight or obese, and more than ever, they're being diagnosed with adult-related diseases like Type 2 Diabetes, High Cholesterol, and High Blood Pressure. We understand that this is a direct correlation, not just with the foods we eat, but more specifically related to the sugary drinks that we put into our children's bottles and that we get sodas out of the machine, and not necessarily utilizing water and other nutrient drinks as opposed to the sugary drinks. The Sugar-Free Kids is a statewide coalition with the mission to reverse the trend of childhood obesity in the state by educating Marylanders about the epidemics of childhood obesity and teen obesity and the role of sugary drinks play in this crisis, and a number of ideas about the steps that can be taken to help improve the environments of places where kids grow, learn, eat, and play to help set them on healthy trajectories for the rest of their lives. For the folks who co-sponsored, I thank you. I ask everyone to come out and listen. You know that we have been doing this thing called the Seven Get Fit Challenge where we're talking about trying to grow healthy families in West Baltimore and throughout the city. And this is another example of something that we can do proactively to ensure that we prevent some of those chronic diseases in the future in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Education and Youth Committee.
City Council Resolution 15-0214-R, Council Oversight Hearing, City Stat Changes, Resolution for the Purpose of Convening a City Council Oversight Hearing to Assess the Current Status, Proposed Future Direction, Cost Effectiveness, and Appropriate Mission of Baltimore City Stat Program. Sponsored Clark, President Young, Curran, Middleton, Scott, Holton, Kraft, Henry Reissinger.
Please note that Councilman Mosby is a co-sponsor and Councilman Welch is a co-sponsor, Councilman Stokes is a co-sponsor. Chair Recognize Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, we all know that we invented City Stat here in Baltimore City and it's spread across the United States. Started with ComStat in New York City, but when Mayor O'Malley was mayor, he adapted it to city agencies, beginning with Public Works. What is it? It's, yeah, you could call it bean counting, but more it's not how many beans are there, so much as how many of them have been collected that are supposed to be collected, how many tons of recyclable material has been picked up as compared to our annual goal this month, how many streets have been mechanically swept based on what we're supposed to be doing now on every street at least twice a month. These are the kinds of countable items that City Stat is known for best. Agencies go, they don't want to go to City Stat so much because City Stat's like an examination that you have at the end of the semester where you have to show up once a month and you have to say, "Well, maybe we didn't pick up all the bulk trash we were supposed to, but we'll come back and we'll do better next month." People are counting, checking, and the people responsible have to account to the citizens ultimately, and the way we do it is through City Stat and 311. Now, it is possible that because City Stat is kind of lightened up on its normal activities, it's in transition, there are certain aspects we don't want to lose, but if things are changing for the better, the City Council needs to know about what form this hybrid creature might be taking. And we certainly should know before the budget comes asking us for money to support whatever it is. So, Mr. President, thank you for referring this to the Judiciary Committee. I'm sure that we'll give it a very good thorough hearing to find out whatever happened to City Stat and what's next, please. We hope it has the accountability factor built in.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Resolution 15-0215-R, Request for State Action, Reduce Nitrogen Oxide Emissions, Resolution for the Purpose of Supporting the Enactment of the Healthy Air for All Act or Similar Regulations from the Department of the Environment to Protect the Health and Well-being of All Marylanders by Reducing Dangerous Nitrogen Oxide Emissions from Coal-fired Power Plants. Sponsored Curran, Middleton, Costello, Stokes, Kraft, Stok, Curran, Middleton, Costello, Scott, Kraft, Stokes, Henry, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Welch is a co-sponsor, Councilman Mosby is a co-sponsor, Council Vice President Wel, I mean Reissinger, and Council President Young is co-sponsor. You're moving for immediate adoption?
Yes, Council President.
Oh, please note that, oh, it's been, he hasn't even done it yet.
Haven't moved yet.
Somebody made, he, Curran got it. Go ahead, Curran. You want it? Oh, and Councilwoman Holton, did I miss any co-sponsors? Councilwoman Specter, anybody else? Okay. Chair Recognize Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. President, my colleagues for the co-sponsors. The Economic Management Committee of the House did not meet today, so this bill could still pass tomorrow. We were informed that it was dead, but needs support now even more than ever. With that being said, I'm going to read a couple of the recitals. Baltimore City and Surrounding Counties have received the EPA's Worst Smog Pollution Designation of Any Area East of the Mississippi River, reflecting the highest smog levels in the east. Altogether, 85% of Marylanders live in areas that fail to meet the EPA National Clean Air Standards, and this burden falls even harder on Maryland's poorest communities. House Bill 1042 will require the MDE, Maryland Apartment Environment, to implement safeguards that would clean up Maryland's dirtiest coal plants. These are some, these are the same rules approved by MDE, Maryland Apartment Environment, in December by Block by Governor Hogan, our business governor and environmental governor, after his inauguration. We're joined this afternoon by Mr. Seth Bush, who is the operating representative for Sierra Club, and they'd like to have this resolution passed tonight. With that being said, I move to suspend the appropriate rules to have City Council Resolution 15-0215-R immediately adopted.
Councilman Scott, motion second by Councilman Kraft. All in favor of adopting this resolution, say aye. All opposed nay.
We suspend the rules.
Second to suspend the rules. The rules are suspended. Chair Recognize Councilman Curran.
Yeah, Mr. President, I move City Council Resolution 15-0215-R, favorable.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All in favor of immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. All opposed nay. The motion current, this resolution is adopted. You can find the Consent Council in Section A at the back of the agenda, as you have motion to approve the Consent Council. Motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor approving the Consent Council, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion current, this Council is approved. Chair Recognize Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Members of the Council, as we all know, this week is Youth Violence Prevention Week here in Baltimore and across the country, and tonight we are joined by some special guests, some young people that are working in both Councilman Kraft and MI District in Southeast Baltimore against youth violence prevention. We are joined by Casa de Maryland's Youth Violence Prevention Project. This school year, the MEAS espacio students worked, were asked to identify one public health issue affecting youth in Baltimore, and they identified violence in and around schools as a primary issue. During their leadership development discussions, they also identified a lack of unity between Latino and African-American youth as an ongoing challenge that they were interested in working to improve. The students developed the Public Education Campaign as a core element of their campaign to reduce youth violence and identify key locations, including schools and city bus routes serving diverse communities in east and southeast Baltimore. The students worked with Maica Volunteer, Elena Purdy, and Castle staff to develop images and messages for the posters that would demonstrate unity, solidarity, and non-violence. Mr. President, I suspend, want to make a motion to suspend the rules to invite guests to the floor.
Second by Council Vice President Reissinger. All those in favor of extending the floor privileges to Councilman Scott's guests, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion current, your guests may take the floor.
Mr. President, as they come forward, I would like to tell us who we're being joined by tonight. Tonight, we have with us the staff members, Ms. Elizabeth Alex. How are you, ma'am? Nice to see you. We have students. Is everybody here? Ms. Alex, we're gonna, ma'am, want to let you, one of the students talk a little bit about what they're doing. I got it. All right.
My name is Chris Ali.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pedro Ortega. I'm a student in Baltimore Community High School, and today I'm going to have a
Councilman, what mic does he have? 10. All right, go ahead. We couldn't hear.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pedro. I'm a student in Baltimore Community High School, and I got to have my translator, my friend, Chris Ali. Soy uno de los líderes que trabajó juntamente con mis amigos en el proyecto de no a la violencia.
I'm one of the leaders that worked with my other partners to create this project about no violence.
La razón fue de que en octubre un grupo de estudiantes empezó a darse en cuenta de la violencia entre jóvenes en las escuelas.
We on October started seeing all the violence that we had in school and discrimination.
Y con las constantes charlas de liderazgo y de emprendimiento en el programa y espacio, decidimos trabajar juntamente con los estudiantes de postgrado de Maica.
So, with the conversations that we had on mi espacio, a program that we go to, we decided to start doing this project with help from the Maica graduate students.
Este proyecto se va a lanzar en diez escuelas, en diez escuelas de Baltimore, y también en 16 autobuses y en dos paradas también para que las personas puedan leer y captar la imagen.
With this project, we want to work with 10 schools, 16 bases and two bus stations, where we're going to put a poster out so everybody can see it and create their own opinion about it.
La mayoría de personas que trabajaron en este proyecto han tenido experiencias personales sobre el racismo y la discriminación y la violencia entre otros jóvenes.
Other people that work on this project have faced violence and discrimination of our reasons by people who discriminate others.
Para mí es un placer contribuir un poco con esto de ayudar a los otros jóvenes, a dar un cambio a nuestra sociedad y a los jóvenes en especial, y mucho mejor hacerlo mediante mensajes que cualquiera lo puede leer.
It's a pleasure for me to work with this type of project and to help others to understand and become better people by doing this and putting, becoming, like to put this together so people can see it and read it in different language.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And really quickly, we have a City Council Resolution for all of the young people. Teamwork makes a dream work. City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offices in serious. Congratulations to Casa de Maryland in recognition of your efforts to reduce youth violence in Baltimore by hosting a culture, public education campaign for Baltimore City High School students during National Youth Violence Prevention Week. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on this 23rd day of March 2015, signed by Council President Bernard C. Jack Young, Councilman Brandon Scott, Councilman James B. Kraft, and all members. Congratulations.
Thank you again. We'll now move the bills on second reader. Education and Youth Committee.
City Council Resolution 14-0169-R, Giving Youth a Voice in Community Decisions, Resolution for the Purpose on Calling on All Neighborhood Community Associations to Make a Greater Effort to Involve Young People in Their Decisions by Including At Least One Youth Representative on Their Executive Boards.
Chair Recognize Councilwoman Clark. Chair Recognize Councilwoman Clark. Education and Youth Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I distracted myself. Mr. President, Members of the Council, we had a hearing and we have an idea that we would like to share with all our colleagues that I'm going to call upon Councilman Scott to announce. And then when he is finished talking about this hearing and our, the outcome of it and our plan, our proposal, I will make the motion to approve our report. Thank you, if I may.
Chair Recognize Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Members of the Council, as we all know, as we travel to community meetings, no matter where you are in Baltimore, the conversation always ends up around young people and the behavior of young people or what young people are doing in the neighborhood. But the common missing theme from our community associations are young people. Young people are not involved in community associations that often they are the conversation of and that make decisions on their behalf. What we are partnering with the Baltimore City Youth Commission to do is to have us be the bridge. We want us to go to each and every community association in our district and ask them to amend their bylaws to have at least one youth member on their executive boards because we know that when young people are engaged at an earlier age, we know that they stay engaged. But also if we're going to be making decisions around young people in our community associations as they often happens, then they should have a seat at the table as well. So, Councilwoman Clark, myself, and the Youth Commission will be coming to you guys with flyers and a plan of how we expect to try to roll this out over the next several months so that we can maybe come back in six months to a year to say that we've already had hundreds of community associations agree to do this. Thank you.
With that plan in mind, which is that we become ambassadors and ambassadoresses, ambassadors to all of our neighborhood associations throughout our districts to bring the message of youth leadership, not just in the community in general, but in the community association. And so, Mr. President, we will return with flyers as models for what we're talking about. We hope everyone picks up the effort as the spring weather proceeds. Mr. President, I'd like to move adoption of the committee report.
You have, do you have any amendments? No amendments?
Oh. What is the amendment? I'm sorry.
They're on people's desks, right? Councilwoman? You're moving the amendments?
Yes, we're, the amendment, pardon me for forgetting, how could I? We're amending Councilman Welch on as a co-sponsor of the bill at his request.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of allowing Councilman Welch to be on the bill, say aye. Those opposed nay. Who's the nay? Please note that Councilman Scott is a no.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, I'd like to move the resolution as amended.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor approving the bill as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved.
City Council Resolution 15-0202-R, Investigative Hearing, Municipal Composting.
Judicial Review of Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 14-0481, Transit and Traffic, Impeding Traffic by School Grounds, Ordinance for the Purpose of Increasing the Fine Without Requiring a Prior Warning for Vehicles That Park, Stop, or Stand in a Manner That Obstructs or Impedes the Free Flow of Traffic by School Grounds Certain, During Certain Hours, Clarifying, Correcting, and Conforming Related Language and Generally Relating to the Imposition of Fines for Obstructing or Impeding the Free Flow of Vehicular or Pedestrian Traffic.
Before we move any forward, can we get some clarity? Because online it says 150481, so what is the correct bill number?
150481.
Can you read that again?
City Council Bill 15-0481, Transit and Traffic, Impeding Traffic by School Grounds, Ordinance for the Purpose of Increasing the Fine Without Requiring a Prior Warning for Vehicles That Park, Stop, or Stand in a Manner That Obstructs or Impedes the Free Flow of Traffic by School Grounds During Certain Hours, Clarifying, Correcting, and Conforming Related Language and Generally Relating to the Imposition of Fines for Obstructing or Impeding the Free Flow of Vehicular or Pedestrian Traffic.
Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is a very important piece of legislation. We heard it on March the 10th here in the council chambers. And this legislation was requested by many school principals around the city, also by various police district commanders. And what this piece of legislation does is suspends the 15-minute rule. And for those of you who don't know what the 15-minute rule is, that's the rule that says that traffic enforcement cannot give you a citation if you essentially double park your car. They cannot give you a citation for impeding the free flow of traffic unless they give you a warning and give you 15 minutes to move your car. What this legislation does is it says that that does not apply if your car is immediately along a block face abutting or immediately across the street from the grounds of a building that is used as a public or private kindergarten, elementary school, or secondary school, or any school, on any school day between 7:00 and 9:00, and 2:00 and 5:00. Basically, it's to stop people from leaving their cars, abandoning them, and letting them sit there, oftentimes running with no key in them, empty, I mean with the key in them, totally empty, while they're running all around and people are swerving around the cars, jumping three, four cars. We've had incidents of children hit, we have incidents of school crossing guards hit. Anyway, we had a good hearing on this, even, what do you call it? Chief Goodwin came to the hearing. So there is an amendment on the members' desk, I would move the amendment at this time.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Thank you. Mr. President, one more comment before I move the bill favorably, and that is this. We have made arrangements and we're in the process of doing this, but I would remind my colleagues, this bill will go to third reader next week, and then it'll go to the mayor. This bill has an immediate effective date. So that kids will go out of school, they'll be on vacation, when they come back from school, this law will be in effect. So that we need to make sure that we notify our schools so that our schools know that if parents double park when they come back from school, that they are subject to this $250 fine. And we're making arrangements to make sure that Dr. Thornton knows and that information gets out. So I am reminding everyone to remind their respective schools. And for those of you who are listening on TV 25, please make note of that. Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
Seconded by Councilwoman Specter. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moved to third reader.
City Council Resolution...
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Specter. I'm sorry, you wanted to speak to it before we did the vote?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend the chairman and the staff for the excellent work on this project. I think it needs to be also private schools come under this regulation. And it is really a safety issue. This double parking and leaving cars has been a real threat to our students. And I really appreciate the quick turnaround on this. And it will be in effect April 1st, I believe. We'll get it signed quickly. Thank you.
So I can be clear, this affect the private and parochial schools as well?
Correct, correct, Mr. President.
So how are we gonna get the information out to them as well?
Right, we're gonna get it out to everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
And we've already begun doing it.
City Council Resolution 15-0202-R, Investigative Hearing, Municipal Composting. Resolution for the Purpose of Requesting on the Director of Public Works and the Chief Bureau of Solid Waste to update the council on the department's progress towards creating a comprehensive municipal composting program to provide a fiscal impact statement on creating the program and estimate a timeline for citywide implementation of municipal composting.
Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we had a hearing on March 11th here in the council chambers. The hearing was televised on TV 25. We had Ms. A. Quoma come in and talk to us about composting. Ms. Collins came in and she also talked to us a little bit about it. Mr. President, we've been talking about this program, I guess, for close to five years now. And I can tell you that if Ms. A. Quoma, Ms. Collins, Ms. Oldendorf all had their way, we would be composting everything right now. We just gotta find a way to do it. But I am confident that someday, somehow, somewhere in the city of Baltimore, we will have a tremendous composting program. But it won't be for lack of effort on the part of the Department of Public Works and the folks that are working there on our behalf. So we had the hearing, and the motion is to approve the resolution as the hearing was held.
Seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve this resolution is adopted. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 14-0444, Zoning Sign Regulations Sponsor or Sign Roads, Sponsor of Road Signs, Ordinance for the Purpose of Exempting from the zoning code sign regulations certain signs posted by or on behalf of the city to acknowledge business entities or other persons sponsoring a street maintenance services program.
Chair recognizes Vice President Riceinger.
Mr. President, there's no amendments to this bill, I move the bill favorable.
Seconded by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 12-0121, Food Service Facilities, Public Notice of Compliance Inspection Ratings, Ordinance for the Purpose of Establishing a Program for Posting the Results of Food Service Facility Compliance Inspections, Expecting Certain Types of Facilities from This Program, Requiring Compliance Inspection Ratings to be Posted on the Facility's Premises Visible to the General Public, Providing for the Public Posting of Compliance Inspection Rating on the Health Department's Website, Authorizing a Differral of These Postings for Newly Licensed Facilities, Correcting, Clarifying, and Conforming Related Provisions, Providing for a Special Effective Date, and Generally Relating to the Regulation of Food Service Facilities.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, there's an amendment being handed out right now. This amendment would really do one thing simply to a bill that's a transparency bill and does nothing to change how health inspections are conducted in the city. This amendment right here, what it would do is, if you were to receive a grade less than an excellent, then you would be entitled to a reinspection, which would occur between seven and 14 days. During that timeframe, from the time of the original inspection until the reinspection, no card or rating would be posted. That reinspection would cost $200. And then at the conclusion of that reinspection, the grade received would be the grade posted until the time of the next regularly scheduled inspection.
Seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of the floor amendments, say aye. Roll call, roll call.
President Young?
No.
President Young, no. Craft? Craft, no. Scott? Scott, no. Curran? Curran, yes. Henry? Henry, yes. Specter? Specter, no. Middleton? Middleton, no. Mosby? Mosby, no. Holton?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to explain my vote. This is a piece of legislation that I do think deserves its day. I just think that its day has not come yet. And the fact that this amendment is being presented for the first time earlier today, not having had an opportunity to be vetted in relation to capacity and budget wherewithal, whether this amount of $200 gets us to where we need to be, is not information that we have received beyond hearsay. And I think that though it is an effort to improve the bill, it lacks the ability to sincerely make sure that this bill is the absolute best it can be. And so I'm not of the attitude of patching and passing and then coming back later to amend a law versus getting the law right the first time. Therefore, I vote no.
Holton, no. Welsh? Welsh, pass. Riceinger? Riceinger, no. Costello? Costello, yes. Stokes? Stokes, no. Branch, absent.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
I vote yes. This makes a lot of sense. The only pushback I've had from food establishments in my district has been about turnaround time for a reinspection. Here we have an amendment that meets the needs that I've directly heard from my constituents about the bill. I appreciate the work that went into preparing this amendment. I appreciate the work that's gone into preparing this legislation. It's been a long time, many hearings, many discussions, many attempts to accommodate all parties. We still require inspections of food establishments. We already do that. This just lets the public know where a restaurant stands. Now, this amendment says, if you'd like to be excellent and you didn't make it, we guarantee through law, a turnaround within seven to, I think, 15, 14 days, we'll be back, you're gonna have to pay for it because it's costing the city extra to be back that fast, all the time. But that's, we'll go with the bill. So, yes, Mr. President, I do vote yes, and I hope the bill will be successful as well.
Clark, yes. The totals, four yes, nine no, one pass, one absent.
This bill is now amended and remains on third reader for final passage.
President Young?
No. Roll call.
President Young?
No.
Craft? Craft, no. Scott?
Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Mr. President, I'd like to explain my vote. Members of the city council, and more importantly, citizens of Baltimore, there is no bill that has been before this council that has been heard more than this bill outside of the zoning code rewrite. We have dotted every i and crossed every t about this bill. We have had six hearings about this bill. We debated body cameras for one day. Two years on restaurant grades, something that is in the place across the country in hundreds of places, if not thousand, including little podunk towns like Littleton, North Carolina, Roanoke Rapids, North Carolina, whatever in Kentucky or Texas. The simple fact that today, after we work hand in hand with the industry, hearing their concerns, taking their concerns into consideration, and even to the point where we were listening to concerns that we didn't even think were valid. But we wanted to be fair with everyone, we have a fair process here. We have a system that we can institute today. Nothing, don't believe the boogeyman. The boogeyman is lying to you. Nothing will change about health inspections in Baltimore once this bill goes into effect. They will impact your life in one different way. Except for an inspection that's done on your behalf, you not knowing the results. You will now know the results. And I don't know about you, but when I pay for something, I like to know what happened with my money. This is what this is really about. This is about transparency for the citizens of Baltimore because it is embarrassing that in 2015, the only way you will know if a restaurant closes in this city, or if, the way that you know their inspection is if you follow Councilman Brandon Scott on the internet. That is a travesty. I vote yes.
Scott, yes. Curran?
Chair recognizes Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the sponsor for saying what he had to say. And as a chair of committee, I've been the chair of committee down here every, for the last 20 years. I've served even as a freshman as chair of committee. And I can tell you, in my committees over the years, the only issue that I've worked harder to get through the committee was the issue seven, eight years ago, where I had the folks on this council help me with the smoking ban that proved the life, health and quality of the life of the hospitality folks that work in the industry and also the folks that go into the restaurants. That smoking ban was worked on by this chairman and staff on the committee for the longest time. But this bill almost rivals that. I know it doesn't rival the transform Baltimore. I know my good friend, the vice president, has been working on about 40 work sessions. But this bill was well-vetted. The proponents and the opponents, as they say, we remanded it down to the best we could with help of the law department, and the health department. Mary Beth Howard's here tonight, Deputy Assistant Health Commissioner for Environmental. The law department very much worked on this very hard. There was meetings outside of the committee with the health department and restaurant associations. There have been outside of the committee with the sponsor and the restaurant associations. Their concerns were addressed. And I do believe that the only loser that will be, if this loses tonight, will be the citizens of Baltimore that won't have the ability to understand which food facilities are adhering the best to the code violations and which are not. I vote yes.
Curran, yes. Henry? Henry, yes. Specter?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Specter.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. I'm not on the committee, but I did spend a lot of time on those many work sessions and even attended the announced voting sessions for this bill. I was inclined to think it put more onus on the small business people, and I'm very sensitive to that. But after listening and paying attention to what the motive and the purpose was, I think it has improved what the city guarantees, the citizens and the business people. And because of the good work that was done by the chair of the committee and the lead sponsor and the agency people, I'm going to vote yes.
You say yes? Say yes. Specter, yes. Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been with this bill since day one, 2012, 2013. And I'm not on the committee, but you know, this is something that this city needs. Our constituents want this to happen, and I've been with it from the very day, so my vote is a yes.
Middleton, yes. Mosby? Mosby, yes. Holton? Holton, no. Welsh? Welsh, pass. Riceinger? Riceinger, no. Costello, no. Stokes? Stokes, no. Branch, absent.
First and foremost, members of the council, I value every opportunity to vote in concert with my district dean, with the dean of the city council. Secondly, I agree with her that this is a very important bill for our tourist industry and as well as for Baltimore in general. We're a 21st century town. We're a 21st century town. We want the tourists to come. We hope that they will, and that when they do, they will see by this. Come on, Pete. They will see by this. We hope that by this, we will grow. I'm sorry that it's something so close to winning by one vote, and I hope that people might reconsider. I'm sorry, Mr. President, I was distracted there for a moment. I apologize for that to the group. Thank you.
Clark, yes. The total, seven yes, six no, one pass, one abstention.
This bill fails. It fails. It needs eight votes to pass. Read the other one.
City Council Bill 14-0393 Zoning 2700 Raynor Avenue Ordinance for the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the Property Known as 2700 Raynor Avenue as Outlin and Redlin the Company Plaid from the RS6 zoning district to the OR2 zoning district. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing for Bill LO Legislative Oversight 150126 on Tuesday, April 7th at 4:00 PM in the here in the DuBarn Chambers, the anatomy of confiscation of property. The Public Safety Committee will hold a legislative oversight hearing on the anatomy of confiscation of property. This informational session will address police department policies and citizens' rights with regards to circumstances under which property can be confiscated by officers. Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee will also hold a hearing on Tuesday, April 21st for legislative oversight at 1:00 at 4:00 PM. The Public Safety Committee will again this year to hold its quarterly meetings on the Baltimore City Police Department's Plan to Combat Violence in the City of Baltimore, and followed by 4:15 PM. The Public Safety Committee will receive an update from various agencies and the police department on the status of the curfew for minors in the City of Baltimore. Both will be held here in the DuBarn Chambers.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Community Development Committee will meet here in the, I'm sorry, will meet in the Reeves Room at 1:30 PM on Monday, March 30th for a city council legislative oversight work session. The committee will be briefed by representatives of the Department of Planning on the neighborhood commercial use being proposed in the comprehensive revision of the zoning code.
Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct a public hearing on Council Bill 140464 Hotels Human Trafficking Prevention. We've had two work sessions on this bill, February 6th and March 17th, and we will have a public hearing on Tuesday, April 28th, 2015, at 9:30 AM here in the council chambers. Mr. President, I would remind everyone, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Bill 150484 Motor Fuel Sales Air Pumps tomorrow morning at 9:45 AM, and we will be voting on the three charter amendments tomorrow morning, immediately thereafter. Right? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow at 4:00 PM, the Budget Appropriations Committee will have budget updates of the city's fiscal year 15 budget review for the first half of the year, as well as looking at a early preliminary of what we may confront in fiscal year 16. That's tomorrow here in chambers at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay, we don't need no council members to leave. We need a quorum if any rules need to be suspended. So I ask everyone to please remain. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We need council people. Okay, we all good. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to announce a hearing of Recreation and Parks, Bill Number 15-0207R, for Wednesday, April 22nd, televised hearing in chambers at 5:00 PM. It's an informational hearing on park and open space policies. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a voting session on Bill 14-0414 on March 25th at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. That's the Plan Unit Development Amendment, Amendment 1 at Johns Hopkins South of Orleans. The Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold work sessions on City Council Bill 12-0152 Transform Baltimore. And those dates and times are Thursday, April 2nd, 10:00 AM also Wednesday, April 8th at 5:00 PM, and Thursday, April 16th at 10:00 AM in the council chambers. The Land Use Committee will also hold a hearing on Bill 15-0480 on April 1st at 1:05 PM in the council chambers. This is a RPP Area 9 located at Federal Hill. It's a planned amendment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Regular announcements. Chair recognizes Vice President Ross Singer. Oh, before I do that, I would like to take a second to remind citizens to be vigilant with regards to fire safety in light of the terrible tragedy that happened over the weekend in Brooklyn, New York, where seven children perished and a fire that was attributed to a faulty hot plate the Sassoon family was using while observing the Sabbath prohibition on lighting a flame. The unspeakable tragedy in New York reminds us here in Baltimore that we must not take fire safety for granted. Our members of the Baltimore City Fire Department stand ready to assist families in need of working smoke detectors. I would like to remind citizens that you can request a free smoke detector from our fire department by calling 311. Just this past Sunday, members of the Baltimore City Fire Department installed more than 50 smoke detectors to residents. I ask for a moment of silence for the Sassoon family and those families in Baltimore that have lost family members to fire.
Mr. President, my colleagues, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, March 30th, 5:00 PM in the council chambers, and I ask for a moment of silence for the Sassoon family.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the 86th meeting of the sub-1st term of Baltimore City Council. Good night.